Today, January thirteenth, I'll call the select board meeting to order if everyone would stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Before we get into the meeting, I just have a comment that I would like to make. There's been some banter on social media and on the virtual common email. And I just want to take a couple of seconds to remind everybody that all the individuals involved are human beings. I would hope that we would treat each other with respect. And especially when it comes to maybe dragging in their kids. So if we could please be a little bit more mindful about that and just have respect for the people that are involved in the words in those emails. I don't want anyone to feel uncomfortable in town. I don't think anyone wants that for themselves or anyone else that they know, so. Just wanted to say that. So, on with the agenda. The first thing on it is a guest presentation about the Page Building, Warren and Neil. Yep, you can come up, you can however you wanna. That's fine, sure. I'll go back then.
You know, I wrote this up for a couple of days at home as if I were talking to strangers and now I realize that I'm not talking to strangers, but it's too late to hold back. Thanks for your time tonight. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about the proposal which you have in front of you. I don't intend to read through it, I just wanted to emphasize a few points and build a little background. And I'm here speaking on behalf of our team, which is Wayne and Sherri Johnson, Ed Hood and Mary Ward, who are not here tonight, Fay Butler, and Kurt Hales, Stephen and Kate Stone. So in a nutshell, we're proposing that we would form a nonprofit entity that the town would donate or sell to us for a nominal amount the Page Building, sell to, sell that to our entity. And that we would raise the money to completely restore and maintain the building and effectively return it to public use. That's, that's it in one sentence. The history of this is, this is a project that some of us have been discussing on and off for more than a decade. Fay and the Fair took a stab at it ten or fifteen years ago. Three or four years ago, Terry and Briggs and I sat on the stone wall at the common talking about it. And discussions began again in earnest about eighteen months ago. So what's the difference now? Well, certainly there's a sense of urgency once we've learned that the buildings, the building was potentially going to be auctioned off, so we, we really, uh, we really had to put it in high gear then. And at least as important is the team that we've got together now, the team that's coalesced around this plan. Within that group of people that I mentioned, plus more people, additional people, we have real life experience in all the functions that we need to see this through. Whether it's creating a nonprofit, securing the 501(c)(3) status, grant writing, fundraising, project management, historic research, events, marketing, outreach, IT. Within our team, we've done all that in different ways on projects something like this. And we think we can see it through to a successful completion. And we have a long list of additional people who wanna be involved if we were to get the green light. As regards the Hardwick Fair's involvement in this, the fair and its welfare are part and parcel of this proposal. We're more than happy, we're proud to have the fair be able to call the Page Building their home. It should be their home. And it would be a brick and, if it, if it is their home, it would be a brick and mortar acknowledgement that this cherished institution of ours in Hardwick is the oldest community agricultural fair in the United States. They'd have a home, an office, maybe some exhibit space, a nice sign out front, some dry storage in the cellar. It's perfect, and it would help to ensure that the fair will be here for generations to come. And on a more tangible note, if that building were to get sold, the fair would lose what storage they have there, and that's a real problem. We would also like to have the Page Building act as a home for the nascent Farmers Guild of Hardwick. That's a young organization, but I can tell you from experience, because I've been working with them, that they know how to get things done. So we are grateful for their enthusiastic involvement in this project. We have talked about all different kinds and forms of ownership and funders, and we've been down a bunch of roads and had to turn back and try a different road. We've gotten legal counsel, we've gotten CPA counsel on this, and to that end, we think that a traditional nonprofit entity, a charitable 501(c)(3) is the appropriate way to go for this. I could tell you that I'd rather stick needles in my eyes than do another 501(c)(3) application, and I'm ready to do that. If we were to receive a favorable indication from the select board, we would go ahead and form the entity in anticipation of taking ownership. We understand that a favorable indication is not a promise, it's not a contract. There would still be hurdles to clear, but it would allow us to take a few steps forward in preparing for taking ownership if we were fortunate enough to have this proposal approved. We'd be ready to secure the necessary amount of property and liability insurance. We would assume all the other usual carrying costs. We do have some private donations pledged to get us started. Subsequent, subsequently, we would begin the process of the 501(c)(3) application, which typically takes six plus months to complete it, file it, and hear back. And it could be more like nine months, it's, it's still long, it takes them a long time to respond. But I will, I will, this is a perfect project for that, there's no reason that it would be turned down. And even if they, if they approved it in November, it would apply to everything that we did during the calendar year that it gets approved in. And I just, I mentioned something about property taxes, 'cause I know that's kind of a hot button issue. As a non, as a tax exempt nonprofit entity, it's my understanding that we are not necessarily excluded from having to pay property taxes. It's my understanding that's a decision of the assessor's office. Either way, whether it's paying property taxes or paying an appropriate pilot payment, this is not an issue with us. We don't want it to be an issue, it's not a deal killer. We're, I just, I don't want that to be an issue here. We would, we would pay our way, whatever. We'll work with the town on that for sure. We have most of our team here tonight. We don't have Mary Ward and Ed Hood who are doing the grant writing and fundraising, but if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. And I asked, and Wayne, if you could just take a few minutes to talk about what year one of the project would look like, just to kind of let you know what we've, where we've gotten so far and where we'd go right off the bat.
Thank you, thank you for hearing us. You know, Neil pretty much said the whole thing. I just wanted to say that as a group, we're really prepared to do this. We've met with contractors, we've met with people, we understand everything that building needs. And we are ready to get started on it. We have a phase one, phase two, phase three. Very excited about the end-use possibilities of this building. They are, they are not all determined yet based on community needs and community input. But we feel it's a great opportunity to take a building that is starting to fail. And it's a burden on the town, and we look like we could take this and we would turn it into an asset for the town. And we're willing to work hard at it. We are a small group of people, lots of input from a lot of other people. And we're really prepared to, to take this on. And I guess the, the main thing is, one, if there's any questions, I know you guys had, but it's the proposal's a pre-read. Is there anything that any of us can answer tonight that maybe you don't think is in the proposal, or or we've pretty much done our job of trying to give you as much information? There's lots to be done, and we're all ready to get going. Thanks for hearing us tonight.
Thank you. Either of you have any any messages that were not on?
So I got a text from him that says, "Standby, it's not live, we're recording," and it's gonna send a stream if there was an issue. So it's recording and it will be live, or it will be on.
I'll have to do it again, Neil.
It's not live, but it will be on YouTube.
I have a question for Wayne, I don't know if, how, who's got the extra?
I want my board members to go and ask questions first, and then I will open it up. If either of you have any questions.
I'm, I'm all for it, I've been waiting for it. We were sitting on the common. It's a great idea. So we got, agree. Something good for the town and everybody in it.
Yeah, sounds very positive.
Is that the positive response you're looking for?
May I chair?
Yes.
I can put more of like a discussion on the agenda for the next meeting if you want, if you wanna, you know, talk about, you know, next steps or or these.
Yeah, well, we would definitely have to, as far as the building go, you know, transferring with the, the building. But I think you've gotten our blessing per se, that you can start. We just have to figure out the, the legal aspects of it.
We'll get the, do a request for proposal.
You know, so.
Yeah, there, there'll be some hoops to jump through by then.
So.
I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Maybe get some preliminary thoughts from, I don't know, council or whoever it would be, you know, about how to go about what, what would be the best avenue? Okay.
Oh, I was just curious about who, what, who has the expertise to, you know, rebuild it and all the things that are involved in renovating it? That's kind of a big project, sounds like you've got a lot of people. Yay, okay.
And we have a lot of input from historic restoration experts that we network with, and we have restored numerous historic.
So wonderful.
I think the building's very strong.
Yeah, it's, it's not that old.
I think the roof was rebuilt, I think, you know, in the middle time, so.
There's one seat down front here if anyone wants to sit down. Stands or?
I, I promise I won't poke anybody with my.
There's a chair.
I'm just in my office.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Meg?
Yeah, just quickly, um, this is great in terms of also the initiative regarding tourism in Hardwick, so it's a, that would be a unique, wonderful thing to encourage people to come. And I think those of us who haven't been working on it would like to say, "Thank you." Well done.
Excuse me, I have a question. Do you have a rough idea how long it would take you, as far as your phases go?
Well, it's funny, we, when we first started talking about this last summer, we actually expected if, if by a miraculous thing, we came in and asked you guys and you gave us the building that day. Before Christmas, we'd have a roof on and have a painting, all the windows and doors and stuff destroyed. So phase one is to really get it looking beautiful on the outside, and include all the stuff we've listed. I think that, again, we have met with many contractors, the question is, you know, suddenly is there a space in their calendar for us? I would say that a lot of it would depend on funding, some of the financing. We were, if, if we get, um, we, like we said, we have a lot of promises or some commitments. But, but some of the real money is, a lot of it's matching funds. And, but some of the dates of those are really critical. There's a big one that's real important in March. That if we miss it, we wait till March of twenty-sixth.
This is for grants?
Grants, and a lot of them, there's some, and Ed can speak better to this, but there's, there's a lot of money out there. We've already done preliminary research, talking with people about it. Very favorable thinking, it's a perfect project for that. It's, it's matching money and it shows our, our commitment, the town's commitment to wanting to restore it. The historic elements of it, it's a, it's a contributing factor of a historic district. There would be historic regulations that we would follow. But I, I, I'll say this, and Neil's gonna probably, um, if, if we got, if you guys, if we got going quickly, within six months, we could have a roof and have a painting and have it looking nice. I would love to say that when a Hardwick Fair happens in August, we could be collecting money from all of six thousand people that are there to help us continue the fundraising and stuff. But if we end up waiting until September to get through all the details, then, you know, it'll take. But year one is, is a, is a pretty aggressive thing, but at, at the same time, we're not gonna not clean it up on the inside and start with the, the physical system. It's already tied into a sewer, I already know how much our sewer bill will be, I talked to the sewer guy. The water is there, it just needs to be connected. The systems are not that bad, it has a good heat system, we've had lots of people, we're gonna update it and all that stuff, but it could happen pretty fast if we have the money and if we have the pool.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you. I think I remember some differences in the attractiveness of an applicant that was a nonprofit versus a town in terms of getting the grant money. Can you explain what advantage there is to being a 501(c)(3) from the town, for example, seeking to develop this in a similar way?
Yep, is that something that you understand, or is that an Ed question?
Can we rephrase that?
I, Ed's not here, but I think I can jump in, 'cause I have enough knowledge of grant stuff. A lot of the grants on the basis that they're offered, you know, are only available whether you're a 501(c)(3). I mean, there's exclusions for who can apply for it. So I'm not speaking to Ed and I'm not speaking to Mary, but I've done a lot of grant work myself. And I'm guessing that just from the standpoint that there's a lot more available to 501(c)(3) nonprofits than, than towns and municipalities.
Thank you.
Makes sense. Okay. All right, so we'll add this to our next meeting for more discussion, and hopefully maybe get some answers on the best avenue to go with the building itself.
Well, on that same vein, then, I'm asking as the Hardwick World Collaborative to have our plan regarding the Ruggles Hill School put on the agenda also, the same thing, because the, these two projects are gonna work hand in hand. And no one from the town has gotten back to us about our project, and we're in the same situation. We've already done all, all of our research. We actually have people from USDA who are willing to fund our project. You know, I'm not talking to anybody about it because the town's not talking to us. So if you're gonna talk, we should have both groups sitting down and talking with the town so that we can use, we can fix two buildings that are historic, that both this group and my group are, are dying to keep as state-wide.
Okay, I'm gonna ask that we split them up and not do them in the same meeting, though, because that's gonna be a lot on the agenda. So we can move yours to the first one in February, how's that?
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm saying that, you know, we, we've been sitting for six months trying to get the town to.
No, we have to do something with the building, so. Okay, anything else on this? Visitor comments? I kind of skipped over that, 'cause I was anxious to hear the this.
The last meeting, there was a comment made that, that we were gonna discuss the contract with ZECOS, but I don't see it on the agenda, so I'm assuming that that is not on the agenda?
There's, I mean, if we're not auctioning off, there's no, there's nothing to discuss.
Well, the, the, I guess.
At this point, we probably owe them some money, actually.
Well, I, I did a little research, I have a copy of the contract, I did a little research, and I questioned whether or not the town was obligated at all on that contract. And the reason that I bring that forward is that for the town to be able to sign a contract with anyone that has a penalty clause in it, it has to be vetted by town council. Now, there was no indication that this contract was vetted by town council. The second thing is that not a single member of the Board of Selectmen signed this contract. Justine, is, was that your signature?
Yeah, because we've authorized her to sign things.
I have the authorization.
From the board to do that.
But, but did any of you people read this contract before you, before she signed it?
They had it.
Yes.
All three of you read this contract? Because this, as a contract, as a business person, this contract sticks. It's great for ZECOS, but it's really bad for the town. And I question whether or not, why this town is signing contracts that were not negotiated by them, that were negotiated by Central Master Regional Planning Commission, which has no skin in the game. And if we owe them, ZECOS, a penalty, then Central Master Regional Planning Commission better coffee, cop up some of it, because they signed this, and their name is on this contract. And that's why I'm saying, is I question legality of this.
We don't know for sure what, what is gonna happen, so.
Well, I'm just saying.
We'll have to see and, and deal with it as it comes forward.
Well, as a taxpayer, I wanna know whether or not we're responsible for potentially a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contract penalty.
Does it say anything about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Fifteen percent on one of three options, the assessed value of the properties, the sale price of the properties, or costs incurred. Whichever is greater.
Isn't that if we don't turn over the property after it's sold, isn't it?
No, that is if we, that is if we've reached the contract, which means we cancel it after it's been signed. So, so whatever is greater is the assessed value of those three pieces of property, which according to the current assessment is almost a million dollars.
I think we're borrowing trouble here.
Yeah, I, it's.
Let's just leave this and see what happens. Or that'd be my suggestion.
I, I don't interpret the contract as such, so we're gonna move on from that. Okay.
We should back out.
Next up? Or any other visitor comments? Okay, the annual designation for the animal control officer, Tina Lindsay?
Yes, so this is supposed to happen every year with the Masters Department of Agriculture Resources. Doesn't look like it has been done in quite some time, so I just wanted the board's authorization to go ahead and renew Tina Lindsay with the state as our animal control officer.
I'll move. One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Highway foreman appointment, Matthew McGowan.
So he, we checked his references, we brought him in for a physical interview and a phone interview, we did Cory check. And just because of the timing of these meetings, he has already started, just to be fully transparent.
Perfect. Yep. Can I get a motion?
Sure. All right. Make a motion to hire Matthew McGowan for driver labor position?
No, highway foreman.
Highway foreman. Oh, it says driver. Second.
Oh, no, on the, yeah, but on the agenda, it says highway foreman, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Bill? You wanna come up and talk about the Morse scholarship?
Well, the, talking about the Morse Scholarship Fund, which was the twenty thousand dollar gift from Elizabeth Morse, set up to, and now the two, or a couple of scholarships annually to Hardwick residents on their way to college.
Yep.
And for a while, that was done sporadically, and then you picked it up and started doing it regularly, and had, as recently as last year.
Last year, we have, yep.
Had two five hundred dollar awards these. So, I'm just gonna tell you that the money, the principal, the twenty thousand dollars, has been in CDs. And a couple of times, I've asked you to, to have me talk with Jase and roll it into another CD and so forth. And so, on that small subject right now, there's a, the next one's due at the end of March. They're starting to give us ninety-one day CDs instead of longer ones, but anyway. So, once again, if we can plan to roll that CD, that'd be good. In a bigger way, I think I'd ask you if you could somehow authorize her on her own or with input from someone like myself to, to do this sort of routinely, rather than ask you for a decision each time. It's within her description, I think, as the treasurer, but.
It is, and I would, I might, I would be comfortable with that, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
With, with some guidance, if you're.
With the, yeah, the idea being that there'd always be money available to do these, perhaps, a thousand dollars or so each year.
The scholarships.
Good, thank you.
And do we have that to be able to offer again this year to five hundred dollars?
Yes, yes, there's, there's at least a thousand dollars, so you once again can do that. I think that Justine has samples of how you found applicants last time and awarded it.
I included in the packet, the application that I found, that you used last year, so if you guys wanna go ahead and, you know, do it annually or just at least prove it this year, I'll make sure we get it out to the schools and everything.
I would say as long as the funds were available, and we would just check on that, that we do this annually.
Okay.
Yes.
Instead of having to revisit the wagon every year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
I still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
We'll leave yet, though.
Yeah, up next, discussion and vote on proposed zoning bylaw revisions. Who's gonna talk about that?
In your packet, I think, are the particular bylaws which the planning board has developed, proposals. In most cases, just amendments and some change of language, some small stuff, some larger things. And then a couple of largely new bylaws, one on battery, battery energy systems and the other on solar installations. We pared down from what we first talked about, Meg, doing almost everything that needs updating and so forth. And we built on the, on the past efforts of the, of the planning board before. And came up with the draft language that's been presented to you. I'd emphasize that in this process, as the law outlines it, it's, all we're doing here is submitting to the select board the, the proposal. And the proposal is then, wherever it came from, in this case from the planning board, but same with anybody else, comes to you, then you, you simply have to say, "Okay, goes to the planning board now," at which time we would schedule a hearing, you know, properly posted, so, you know, it'd end up a few weeks out, and then have the hearing with the public and all officials involved to, to see exactly what's in there and talk about it and make some changes possibly. Then those, that newer final version would go into a, into the warrants that would then be at a special town meeting. That would be sometime not too far after the hearing was closed. So all the planning board's really looking for is, is your, your suggestion that we continue on this process. We would, and we would be posting, after we got it back, we'd be posting the proposed language on the website alongside, you know, the existing.
Like what we got? The redlined, yep.
Yeah, yes, right. Right, so that's all we're looking for, is to, is to move on to the next step after months of contemplation. Yeah, yes, right, right, so, that's all we're looking for, is to, is to move on to the next step after months of contemplation.
You're here.
Do, do we do that now?
Would we just say thank you?
Yeah, it's just more.
Then that's, it's just a.
And then goes back to that.
If you guys have any questions or any, anything.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with this, with it.
Any questions?
Moving, yep.
Well, then we would, uh.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, I have, I have questions for you, Bill.
Oh, okay.
The section on the nine, the solar energy facilities, um, paragraph nine point one, at the very bottom, I will, the second paragraph down, it says, "The solar array facilities shall be consistent with community planning documents, including but not limited to the town's master plan, open space, and recreation plan." So, what is, I'm just trying to figure out, what is the intention, if somebody wants to come and do a solar array and presents to the planning board, how does the master plan and open space and recreation plan, how, how does that all work together?
Well, this and many other things would be a best able, maybe, to be addressed by, or answered by everybody who's at, at the hearing, with their different inputs into what it means, but I would say that, all, all that saying, and it's very possibly borrowed language from other approved, you know, AG approved towns that have done that, but, to me, it just reads that whatever we do, um, is hopefully in line with the master plan and the open space. So, in other words, if something, if the open space plan says, well, we wanna have this solar, or thi- this is not for solar, or this is a, a ball field, or something like that, then maybe, maybe that, a, a solar facility there wouldn't be consistent with that. So, it's just saying, in the, in the process of deciding where these things can be or should be, take a look at the town's overall planning documents. It doesn't say it can't be, it's clearly can be if the town was to approve it. But it's just making reference to that along, you know.
Okay.
I'm sure that question, others will come up in the hearing.
Right, right, I have one other regarding the USDA. It was, it was kind of vague, but, uh, that of the prime or statewide importance per USDA, why wouldn't the state have a say over USDA? All right, now I'm just wondering, like, what we're referring to, you're trying to get at from the USDA.
I think that's a designation that, uh, I believe that that's an effort, again, not just shared, not originating here, but various towns have said, um, all right, we don't, there, there's a problem, when there's a problem with solar installation, it's often that it clears a whole lot of trees, that's what.
Right, right.
Or it goes on, it goes on pasture land, which may be okay, but this is saying, ideally, it's not going to go on prime, prime farmland.
Okay.
You know, so, again, it doesn't say it can't, but it's, it's, it's not intended, it's not encouraged to be, to go on prime USDA soil, that's, that's a designation they have.
Okay.
So, that's all.
Alright.
You know, the whole thing, as we'll talk about later, Morris, the whole thing is a balancing act between what the state allows in terms of regulation, restriction of these developments, you know, installations. They really wanna encourage them, so they say, no unreasonable regulation, so what is unreasonable regulation? We've tried to come up with reasonable regulation that will pass the AG's, you know, view, and give the town reasonable control over the impact of, of facilities like that, which, bottom line, we welcome in the right places, it's kind of, you know, it's alternative energy, and it's, it's money to the town, but we don't wanna just say, bring it on.
No, I, I get, I get it, that's why I was just asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are we all comfortable with it going back to the planning boards, that we can continue with our process?
We can.
Okay. Very good.
It doesn't have to be formal?
Alright, okay.
Yeah, let's just go back to them.
Alright.
And they carry on, and so they'll, they'll, you'll schedule your, your hearing, and.
Yes, hopefully, we meet tomorrow, actually, so, if we saw in the box that, or we, we know now that you've sent the receipt, then we'll make it as, as a, thank you.
Oh, perfect. Okay, excellent, alright, thanks, Phil. Okay, uh, discussion and vote on permitting checklist. That was, um, presented to us a little while ago, and now it's been cleaned up.
Um, yep, uh, so it's more of a, more of a final document at this point. Um, it went out to all the departments that are listed on it, um, I met with Becky on it. I took probably ninety percent of their suggestions, and here it is, so, um, with the boards, um, besides the one spelling error, um, that I just noticed, sitting here. Um, if the board thinks it looks good, um, we can start implementing it, if, if, if you'd like to vote on it tonight.
I'm good with it. Yeah, can I have a motion?
Sure. Um, make a motion to approve the building application approval checklist.
With the spelling?
With the spelling, correct.
It'll be amended.
With the one spelling correction.
Thank you.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, discussion and vote to approve post-community agreement draft with Hardwick Mill Greenery, is in your packet?
Yep, so, it's, if you think back, I know it's been a while, but, uh, back in December, I included in your packet the Cannabis Control Commission sample, um, post-community agreement that they've been approving. So, that is essentially what this document is, with a couple, um, yellow highlights from town council, um, so, um, there was one thing I do wanted to bring up, I did wanna bring up to the board, uh, to get your authorization on, which would be on page three. Um, town council's notice, this can be included for businesses that are not operational, we recommend twelve to eighteen months. Um, so, section five C compliance, if you're comfortable with that, I'm also comfortable with including either twelve or eighteen months. Um, I don't, I think, I think it should be more of a short-term agreement, with there's so much fluidity going on in the Cannabis Control Commission, um.
I think that's what we talked about initially as well.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to, um, have you guys look at it, and if, if there's anything, um, any questions or anything that you want me to take back, or if I can answer them, I will, but if you're fine with it, then we'll put it in a final, final draft for, or made a final document for, um, or Mill Greenery. Of course, you'd still have to sign it, but I wanted you to at least look at a draft.
Yeah. Do, do we do a year, or do we do eighteen months, or?
I would do eighteen months, I would, that's what I would recommend, just because of construction, you don't know, like, he talks about the transformers and possibly have them, if he doesn't get them, stuff like that, it just delays.
I think the point from town council is the, the commission is evolving daily on what they accept and what they don't accept.
They've already changed it several times.
Yeah, they have, so, Stan?
If, if you don't mind, just a question, um, is that posted online, that agreement?
This?
I looked for it before the meeting.
No.
Not this one, no, because we haven't done anything with it.
Okay.
Right.
Um, if I recall, the first agreement, the town went with one and a half percent, but there's a, a, there was a higher number that I think the state allowed, right?
No, they don't allow anything anymore.
Oh, no.
That's why we have to redo it.
There's no.
The state, the state has taken that out, it's not part of any of it.
So, unless we can really, um, like, i- if there's impact to the town, and we generate an invoice on that impact, that's what we can bill them, but there's no three percent anymore, there's no percent anymore, there's nothing.
The state has to approve it.
Yeah, 'cause I, in that first agreement, or the way it was originally structured, I don't think the town would've come out with much anyways, 'cause I think the retail for that is primarily like in Shirley or somewhere, so, that's okay, that we aren't losing anything.
It's not, yeah.
Um, when you say, um, an expense to the town, I, I like the idea of the, a limit on the time of the contract, because it kind of keeps them in a performance mode, but, um, at some point, if they don't start doing something, aren't we losing some money somehow by taxes or?
So, they have been doing stuff, and they have been paying their building fees, like their permits, and.
So, we're good.
They have been, it's been a very painful, slow process, um, it, like everyone knows, COVID put kind of a halt on a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
And, um, I mean, we're still seeing that in construction.
So, they're still intending to.
They are, yeah, and they have done so, they have done work to the interior, yeah, yeah.
I know, and you had mentioned it, Bill, that I talked to the owner at one point, and they were having trouble getting transformers, but, so maybe that's part of the line.
And they dealt with the shrimp crabs, and, and they just finally got that, right, by the clam shrimp, whatever, yeah, clam shrimp, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quite wrapped up, yeah.
But, but it's, but it's getting there, so that was a big, that was a process too, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Should be, okay. Any questions or anything, oh, send me an email.
Okay, sure, thanks.
So, um, so, yeah, twelve or eighteen months, are you comfortable with eighteen?
I'm okay with eighteen, I want them to get going and.
Yeah, do something, yeah.
What they have done, they fixed the roof.
Yeah.
They fixed all the windows, and they had a much better building right now than it was.
The windows, yep. Yep. Yep, a lot, um, and, can I have a motion?
Well, uh, we're gonna wait and sign it at the next meeting?
Well, but are we gonna make it a final draft, so that we can sign it at the next meeting?
And, and send it to them, 'cause they, uh, they have not seen us, yeah.
Right, they haven't seen it either.
Okay.
So, we make a motion just to proceed.
And we'll eighteen months that we do that.
Eighteen months, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to add the eighteen months to the Hardwick Mill Greenery post-community agreement.
You'll second it.
And send it off to.
Yep, for them, yep.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, discussion and vote on town administrators' contractual requests. So, at the last meeting, uh, Justine brought up that she, her ninety-day probationary period was up, and when we spoke to her initially and did our negotiations with her, um, we, she had asked for ninety, and we started her at eighty-five, but budgeted for ninety, so she is looking for that additional pump in her pay. And so, we said we would do a little kind of review at this meeting and discuss that, um, that pay increase, so, here we are. So, um, I had sent you all a little evaluation form, did you, did you look at that in review? And at the request of, uh, one of the board members, we did reach out to other, uh, you know, the departments in the town, other employees, and got feedback from there, so, I'll start by saying that, um, I, ninety percent of the feedback, or ninety-five percent of the feedback was very positive, Justine, people enjoy working with you, um, they're, you're very approachable, you know what you're, you know, talking about, you're, you've got the knowledge, you know, backing the position. So, um, one thing was, um, maybe just staying on course with your role as the town administrator, as opposed to other boards and, um, other elected officials, that was just one, um, one note there. Um, I took the evaluation forms that you sent, and I, I kind of marked them up. The only one I didn't mark was attendance, 'cause I'm not here to see when you come and go, so, I'm, I'm assuming that you are here on a regular basis and showing up on ten.
And then some, yeah.
So, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna mark you up on that, but, um, you know, overall, I, I gave you threes, threes, fours, and fours. So, out of the fifty-two points you could've gotten from me, you got like fifty, uh, forty-seven, I think, so, um, I'm very pleased with what you've done in the ninety-day, I mean, this isn't a long time, folks, you know,
Seven months.
It's three months to pretty much figure out that, why am I in Harwick? No, joking. So, we're happy she's here, and, um, that's, that's my input to you, and, um, open it up to the other board members, obviously, so.
I, I think you're doing a great job, so, I really no issues as far as that goes, um, and I'm happy with your work performance, I mean, I don't deal with you that often, but that's why I requested, like, get the department head feedback and stuff like that, so people who deal with you on an ongoing basis, we can get feedback and see how you're doing, and you're doing great.
You're not sick of me yet?
No, we want you to stick around.
I would also mention that I would, um, be in favor of increasing her pay at this point, so, that's just backtracking a little bit, go ahead.
Okay, alright, go. Well, we've, uh, it, it, there have been some rocky places, but, uh, we've moved along and, uh, gave you threes and fours too, so, I think, uh, that sounds good.
I think Chris wanted to say something too.
I'll take comment.
Thank you. No, as, um, part of the finance committee, we, we're gonna be working very closely with Justine, and so far, the experience has been very positive.
Good.
I think she's bringing a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, financial management to the town, so the budget process so far has been very, very good. It's been very positive, so we're looking forward to, um, really getting into this, and, uh, kind of through the full budget cycle, so appreciate the, the hard work, and, um, and I certainly would recommend, uh, the increases, well.
Any other comments? Anyone wanna chime in?
I just wanted to bring up one note that, um, a little bit of research done with larger towns and administrative assistants with more experience, um, the norm is about ninety thousand, and we're a smaller town, and a person with less experience, so, um, it's just as a note, uh, you know, ninety seems to be a, a term, uh, own, an amount for people with more experience in larger towns.
I didn't find that in my research, but thank you, Liz.
I'm not administrative assistant either.
She's the town administrator, she's not an assistant.
Well, I did, you know.
The week, in favor, are we, wanna vote on the increase?
Would you like me to make a motion?
Please.
Um, make a motion to increase Justine's pay by five thousand dollars to her existing contract.
You second it?
Phil in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Justine.
Thank you so much, um, I mostly enjoyed my time at Hardwick, um, I lo, you know, the staff is amazing. I thought all three of you just, so far, very approachable, and I'm really excited to be here and, uh, see what we can do, and, uh, work hard, and, um, I'm, I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, approval of minutes from November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Um, I just have one change.
Oh, sure.
On the vote for the auction, I actually voted no on that, I didn't abstain.
Okay.
If you can just have Sandy change that.
Yep.
Thank you, other than that, we find it.
I'm okay with it.
Yep, motion.
Alright, make a motion, um, motion to approve the Hardwick meeting minutes, board meeting from November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
With that correction.
Yes.
With that correction.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, town administrator report?
Uh, so something that's not on my town administrator report, um, so, they drained the oil tank in the Ruggles Hill,
Oh, good.
Um, and it's gonna be removed on Thursday, um, and then Eric and I, uh, Sackman, Wilhelm and I talked about, uh, in a couple days, then they'll do the oil testing, um, so that's being done.
Ongoing, good.
Yes, um, also to, the fifteen thousand that we got from the state for, um, hydrants is gonna fix two of them, and the two that are gonna be fixed are the one on Harwick Road and down here on Main Street, um, and that's gonna be done the next couple weeks. We have all the parts, so, we're just waiting on Marty in the highway when they have time.
Yep.
Obviously, with the winter, it's been a little, um, crazy.
Good.
Another thing that's not on here, because it just happened, um, is we are going to receive the fifty thousand dollars from the state for improvements to this building, um, that was a state earmark, so I signed the contract for that today, so.
Perfect, good, excellent.
Um, the new phone system is being installed, they were here a day last week, they're gonna be here again tomorrow, um. We signed a new lease with a new postage machine that was also delivered today, that the town clerk installed. Um, panic buttons were installed in every office in town hall, every active desk now has a working panic button, um, and all the old ones with all the wires and all that was taken out, and it's, it's gone. Um, the town, the town clerk's office, my office, and the assessor and building inspector's office, our three doors have now been fixed, um, that's also exciting.
So, they don't have the big holes in them anymore, 'cause we did that during COVID, so that people could slide papers through, so, just so everyone understands. That and the panic buttons, um, arose because of an incident that did happen here, um, a few months ago, so, just so people have an understanding why, why we're doing that.
Um, so, I took a one-day advanced topics and procurement class as part of my continuing education, as part of my Massachusetts, um, chief procurement officer designation, so I did that, um.
So I did that, um, department budget meetings have been completed. Um, we still have a bi-weekly financial management planning meetings with the assessor accountant and collector. I met with the finance committee chair on the budget, which we've been kind of communicating and doing that semi regularly. So I will have the, at least the department budgets and as much as I can, um, the books and stuff together to you guys. It'll be, they'll be done by the end of January, so the start of February, you guys will at least have an idea. We're waiting on the numbers from the state, so I'm hoping to get that at the, my, um, MMA conference at the end of the month, as well as our Maya health insurance numbers. I'm also working with, um, another property and casualty insurance company that will do like our workers' comp, injured on duty and property insurance. So that number's gonna fluctuate less. So, um, there's just a couple thi-, like there's a few things that are just.
So do you think by our first meeting in February, we'd have those books to at least start poking through?
Exactly, yes.
Cool, perfect.
Nothing from the school yet?
Uh, no.
Nope.
No.
We were on, um, a meeting with them and we still don't have a number. Um, I attended a CDVG progress meeting with the town accountant and CMRBC. Um, the RFP for the Highland Terrace project has been published. Um, I just talked about attending a, a budget meeting with the school department. Um, today I joined a grant webinar with Mass DOT to see, um, they talked about a ton of grants that we may be eligible for. We hired a new work informant. Um, so started kind of contract discussions with employees that have contracts that expire at the end of the fiscal year. We will have six. So those conversations have happened again as putting the budget together. Um, just to kind of give you a heads up of where we are.
When will we start meeting in executive session?
Next meet, next meet, our next board meeting.
Okay.
I'm hoping to have an executive session.
Okay, beforehand, yeah.
Yes, with you guys to get your priorities and everything.
Perfect, thank you.
I just don't wanna wait to the last minute and I'm trying to stagger them, so they're not like one after the other. Um, I attended the Holiday Massachusetts Managers Association meeting on ethics. Then I met with the department head meeting, I met with the animal control officer. Um, there were things that were brought up in that conversation that, um, definitely need to be addressed, like finding a kennel and a contract with a kennel, because right now, we don't have one. So she's using her house, she's using her car.
Maybe ask Barry, what they do, right?
Yep. I was interviewed on the radio again. Um, I wanna recognize Lieutenant Kevin Landine. He has worked with our legislators in, in the ten communities that are part of our dispatch. And he was just able to, he just received a hundred fifty thousand dollars of a three point five million dollar project. So we will be able to get some radios and stuff that are on the same frequency as all the surrounding towns. Um, so he's been working on that for a while.
That's probably by three radios.
I know.
If that. Um, so we are having a managers training for department heads and assistant department heads on February eleventh from nine thirty to eleven thirty AM. Um, anyone that has staff, it's, it's mandatory for them to attend, but any department head is welcome to come. But, um, just some positive management techniques and dealing with difficult situations. We have a special town election being held at the Hardwick Elementary School from twelve to six on Saturday, January eighteenth. And then something else came in after the fact. There's gonna be a blood drive at Quavon Regional Middle High School, February twenty-seventh from ten to four in the high school gym.
Um.
Of course you can.
Backing up to contract negotiations.
Yeah.
Do you want someone from Bingcom to be present when it's the board in executive session?
That'd be nice.
Talking about that?
Yeah.
I mean, it affects the budget.
Yeah.
So on the twenty-seventh, do you, oh, you're gonna be here anyways for, um.
Oh, press it out.
Do you wanna come to the meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and that's really all that I have right now, although I might think of other things that come up.
Sluckman round table, Sluck board round table.
Well, it's, it's, it's kind of covered it, the Saturday election from noon to six for the fire truck.
Yep.
I know there's been talk and people think, you know, the price is kind of high. But at the same time, this is an opportunity, the truck exists right now. And if we don't, don't take this opportunity and we say no, that truck is gonna go somewhere else and it's gonna be gone. And you're talking replacement wise, you place an order for a fire truck today, it's minimum two years, possibly three before you have a fire truck. Just to keep, you know, just.
A lot more money.
And it's gonna probably be in the range of a million two to a million three for the exact same vehicle. Just, just wanted to put it out to the community, so you think long and hard. I know it's a tough vote, but think long and hard and please show up and vote.
Can I ask a question right now? Um, on the, I had heard a little chatter about, you know, a number of the hydrants not actively working, which I see the two are going to be, which I think is great news. So there was a bit of chatter about what's the point of having a new fire truck if we don't have working hydrants? So I'm wondering, is there a strategy for getting the other hydrants that have been working? Are we actively tracking down money for that right now?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so some of that fifty thousand dollars that I've, oh, do you mind if I?
No, go ahead.
Okay, some of that fifty thousand dollars that I was talking about for this building, I'm gonna use some of that to fix that one. Um, and so I am actively, you know, we are looking for.
Okay, so that would give, so how many hydrants are we looking to fix? Six?
Yeah, so three will be done.
So three will be done, okay, so that seems reasonable. Yeah, this is a slight deviation, but I had heard a figure thrown around that it costs twenty thousand dollars a year to send a student to our Hardwick school. Is that accurate?
That's a rounded up number.
Yeah.
It's more like eighteen, you'd have to look, we, we could get that number, but it's around either eighteen or nineteen.
Why is that costing so much?
It's all based, I mean, do you want me to answer this?
There you go.
All right.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a number that the state, the, the department of education actually designates based on the entire budget versus students.
We pay half of that and the state pays half of that.
Right, okay.
And it's based off of the Quavon regional budget that they put together for the school district and based on enrollment and per town that's broken up, what, what town, what percentage they pay and contribute. And they, it's an, at the end of the day.
It's, it's a, it's a value that they put on the cost to educate a child.
Right.
So our cost is half of that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a pretty big number.
It's a pretty big number. It seems like, just from what I've been hearing, it's quite a bit of the town budget.
It is.
Running.
The bu-, the school budget is half of our overall budget, yeah. It's a big number.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? We good?
I just have one thing for the board to sign, so we can send, um, all of our liquor license applications and everything to the state. I just need your signature.
Yeah.
That, uh, your signatures.
We're still around too, it's time to speak.
Oh, sorry.
We are, yes.
Mm-hmm. Just wanna thank everybody in the room, all the work. Good, thanks.
Yep.
That's it. You want me to use my real name?
Kelly, can I just ask, what's the RFP for the Highland, RFP for the Highland Terrace project? What's that about?
Road, uh, road repairs to Highland Terrace.
I think they do some with the sewer too.
Yes.
I think there is a little bit of sewer work up there.
There definitely is.
About the project?
It's been ongoing for, um.
We're supposed to, November twenty-fifth, was that when the contract was voted for the auction? And you said your vote was not recorded, correct?
Correct.
So you voted no?
I voted not to table.
It was, it was, yeah, it was voted to table, to table.
It was the vote on the, on the floor was from someone. The motion was to table the auction, like in other words, put it on hold. I voted no.
Oh, oh, but, but now it's being reconsidered, it sounds like, the contract?
No.
Probably, it's probably further away than.
So initially, we voted to move forward with the contract and was signed.
Right, but now, I mean, you made several references to town council. I'm assum-, I'm assuming the town has a lawyer who's looked at this. I mean, I kind of had to agree with what Liz was saying that, you know, you can't agree to a contract where you have no minimum bid and there's a lot of, a lot of problems with it. And I, I'm just kind of still a, what?
None of that is, was, that wasn't part of the contract with CMRBC. This was a CMRBC contract.
Okay, so, but this business of the auctioneer getting some money, that sounds not right. If, you know, it's four months away and, I mean, you just referenced earlier, we're gonna owe them some money. I don't know who you're referring to.
That we may, if they've incurred costs, like they'd already bought signs.
Well, they just posted some pictures on a website, I mean, you mean for the auction?
Correct.
Okay, but it's de minimis, right? It's not like a.
No, correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Is that a motion?
A motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.